I actually need the stairs to burn off my ears. What is enough?
All right, it's six P M. Good evening, everyone. I will call this meeting to order. Lindy, can we do a roll call, please?
Jim?
Here.
Alexia?
Here.
Carlos?
Here.
Kristen?
Here.
Here.
Denise?
Here.
Here. Thank you. Thank you, Lindy. All right, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right, I would like to take this opportunity to open the meeting to public comment about anything that is not on the agenda and remind anyone who would like to speak as a member of the public that we have a three-minute opportunity for speaking. Do we have any public online? Oh, they're not commenting online, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so I'm not hearing any public comment about non-agenda items, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Discussion for Possible Action: Approval of the Agenda for Today for May 1st, 2025.
This is Jim. I move to approve the agenda for tonight.
A second motion from Lee.
Thank you, Jim, for the motion and Lee for the second. Before we take a vote, is there any discussion or comment from the board about the agenda? No? Any from the public? Hearing none, we have a motion from Jim to approve the agenda, a second from Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thanks, Carlos. Motion passes, agenda's approved. Okay? Item number six, Discussion for Possible Action: Approval of the Minutes from April 3rd, 2025. Are there any comments from the public about the agenda from our last meeting in April?
This is Jim. I move to approve the minutes for April 3rd.
Thank you for the motion, Jim. Are there any board comments or questions about the agenda from, or the minutes from April 3rd, 2025? Yeah, but we're going in the order of comment. And then we'll get a second. All right, so no discussion or comment. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing, motion passes, excuse me. Minutes approved for April 3rd, 2025. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven. This Agenda Item is for Discussion or Possible Action: Road Abandonment File 2025-015. A request by the applicant to abandon a portion of G Street, H Street, and Sutton Street right-of-way, rights-of-way located between Mill Street and Sutton Street in Virginia City, Story County, Nevada. The rights-of-way to be abandoned will be consolidated into the adjacent parcels of land owned by the applicant, and easements will be reserved for utilities. The rights-of-way to be abandoned are adjacent to APNs 001-154-03, 001-158-01, and 001-192-01, Virginia City, Story County, Nevada. I would like to make a note that City is missing a C.
What a typo.
Sorry.
Come on.
Okay, Kathy, please.
Thank you. So this is a request that we received to abandon some platted right-of-way that's in Virginia City. The location of this is where previously before the Virginia City Fairgrounds was constructed and owned by the county. This was an area that there were a lot of special events that were held for the town. I went back and was trying to find out how far back it went and just even some from some older Google Earth photographs that was there in 1985, so it was even a little bit older than that. I'm not saying this is historical, but it's been there for quite a few years. Staff has looked at this. It's within this arena area. The areas that border Mill Street, as you can tell from some of the pictures that were included, has a significant amount of earthwork that's between where these platted roads would be and where it would connect to Mill Street. And looking at the site and how the actual construction of the site was done with it being terraced and laid out, the idea that this area would be developed as something different by the property owner or that there would be a thoroughfare through there doesn't seem very feasible at all. There's also a little portion of Sutton Street that connects. I tried to do some research on why is this little eight-foot strip of land here and couldn't find any reason why. I think this was just something that was left over when other mapping was done a long time ago. There's no water lines or sewer lines that run through there. Eight feet isn't wide enough to be any kind of public street. And it drops from like the top of a spoil pile almost straight down, so it's not a place where we would put any utilities or anything in there either. It would be too steep. So with this request from the applicant, they have ideas of things that they're going to want to do in the future. This is not approving any of the ideas that they have for the future. This is just looking at this abandonment. But if this was abandoned, then they can consolidate all of this together and then they have a larger piece of land to do some of their own special events or developments or whatever that they might like to do. We did notice this in the newspaper and also notices went out to adjacent property owners. We did receive a letter of concern that I believe that was also passed out to you. And I will say that staff is also concerned with what they're bringing up. We definitely look at all the how the circulation patterns work in the town and recognize that these streets are important, even if they're not built today. You'd be, we have a few of these come up, it seems like every year. I talk to people every month about different ideas that they have and pretty much discourage kind of what they do and try to come up with different ideas for them. So we do get a lot of the questions. I don't want it to feel like everyone that comes forward, we're recommending approval to get rid of these things. We're not. We're very much looking at how these circulation patterns and things work. In this case, it makes sense to us that this is an area that has historically been used together. It's not used as a street. And so staff is supportive of the abandonment for this location. We did talk to the utility companies and our Public Works Department. There's one little, I think, electrical pole that's here. On part of it, that's serving the property itself. They'll need to work when they do the record of survey if this is approved to do an easement for that piece. There was also a question with our Public Works Department that if this ever wanted to have water service to it, there needs to be a way to loop the system. That's how their water systems work in a loop. So the applicant has agreed to work with Public Works and figuring out where that best location is. It's not in any of these existing right-of-way plats. It's going to have to be on someplace else because of the way the topography works and then how the water systems work. So that's a condition of approval, too. Based on that, the other item that there was a little bit different with this is there is one connection on H Street at Mill Street. And what that does is it, there was a photograph of trying to capture it, the bottom of page five. There's a driveway that comes in, immediately goes to the east and connects with the I Street right-of-way area. We're recommending that that accessway be retained either through a public access easement or just by not abandoning that piece. It does the same thing either way. We were leaving that to the applicant, how they wanted to do that. The fire department also was reviewing this and requested that this access piece remain, and the applicant was aware of that and didn't have any issues with any of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm sure if there's anybody from the public that might want to comment. There is that also, that letter that we received. And I'm not sure if the applicant, there was a lot of mix-up with this being continued, so that she may have been confused a little bit, so I apologize for that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kathy. So at this time, I would like to open it up for comment or discussion. So to the public, is there any comment or discussion from the public? So I'm going to ask you to please come up to the podium and state your name, and please remember that we have a three-minute allotment for a statement.
Three minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Los Endon, northwest Virginia City. I prepared a written comment, but I forgot my glasses, so I'll see what I can remember.
Could you expander mine?
It doesn't help. One years ago, I used to walk from Stewart Street down Sutton all the way to the old California mine. I cannot do that anymore because in 2005, they built a parking lot between E and F Street. And in my opinion, there was no need to do that. They could just build a parking lot on both sides of the street, and if they need more room for the event, they just close the street, like they did last weekend with the motorcycle race. Now, these streets that they want abandoned are important. Take H Street, for example. It starts on the south end of town where all the miners, all the mines used to be, the Color Potashie, the Julia, the Belcher, and other mines that I don't remember. Go through the fairgrounds, across several streets like Flowery, Washington, Taylor, Union. The old side of the Chinatown, Sutton, Mill, Carson. And here in between Mill and Carson, on the west side of Virginia City, we have the baseball field, miners' park, the playground, daycare, the public library, the community center, and other things that I don't remember. And it ends on North Street, right there at the entrance of the cemetery, although it's not clean right now. The other day, I was looking at a map. Right here, in this building, historic data shows that in the 1870s, there was a mill, I think it was a consolidated mill, right there on H Street. But even then, the owners did not share objects. No, they built a structure on both sides so people and public can walk through. Now, ten, twenty years from now, I may not be around, I think I'm the oldest person in here, but anyway, what future generation will think about us, the residents of this place and time, when they learn that we gave away, abandoned, privatized, sold part of the Virginia City historic landmark? Now, I still have time, I don't know.
You have one minute left.
One minute?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the city may not need those streets, but the place is growing. People are moving into town, and more and more visitors are going to come. And then it's going to be more valuable for the county and for the city, every single space of public land they can have. And that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Are there any other public comments? Oh, yeah. Not online. All right, Alexia. Any board comments or questions or concerns?
I have a comment. A number of years ago, there was an event held in this area that was for the wild horses. And Lacy J. Dalton headed it up. But there were a number of bands that were playing in this area and so on for that event. So it has had some history of being used for that particular kind of an event.
Yes. Any other comments or concerns? Yes, Kristen?
This is Kristen Brown. I tend to agree with Mr. Senden on this issue. From a historical perspective, this is, I'm concerned, not so much, I mean, I understand the need to keep the circulation networks open for the public, but my main concern is what will come next. It is a National Historic Landmark District. The original plat of the town and the original circulation networks and the original arrangement of the parcels and where the historic mills and other larger industrial buildings were, if we allow, if, once this is abandoned and this becomes a very large parcel, and that just opens the door for future, future development, of course, that's what the applicant is hoping to do. And I can't blame them, certainly. Makes a lot of sense from a business perspective. But if there's a large development in the middle of town, it will completely, it'll be an irreversible change to the original layout, use pattern, circulation networks of the Historic Landmark District. And I know that the CHDC does not have jurisdiction on things like this. Back when the state statute was written in 1969, the National Historic Landmark nomination was only a few years old. And back then, people didn't write those the way we would write them now. It was very brief, very high level. It really just talked about, at that time, some of the more significantly, architecturally significant buildings and just the general history of the place. And subsequent nominations, when it was updated two times throughout history, it was improved. But that nomination for this district has not been improved since the 1990s. How we would write that today, we would absolutely take into consideration things like the original layout, use plan, circulation network, the feeling, the pattern, the rhythm of the streets and the blocks. We would take that and we would write about that as a character-defining feature of the district today if we were to do it today. And also, another thing that would have changed is if this statue had not been written in 1969, if it was written today for, say, a town in a historic preservation ordinance, this type of thing would require a certificate of appropriateness. It would require going in front of some sort of historic review board in a city or county elsewhere if it was written today. So understanding that the CHDC does not have jurisdiction over this type of thing, I believe the spirit of the statute does. Do you know what I mean? It implies that this state statute is in place to protect the history and the general character and vibe of the district. And it includes allowing new buildings to be built. Of course it does. New buildings are built here all the time. But they're required to follow the setback and the massing, the street orientation. They're required to kind of mimic that historic rhythm and pattern. And if somebody is, has this large of a lot, they will not be able to build something that big anyway, because I don't believe that would pass the CHDC approval. So I tend to agree with Mr. Senden that from a strictly historical standpoint, it doesn't feel right to me. And I also kind of feel like we don't have enough information. I'd like to see more. I'd like to see historic maps, historic aerials. I'd like to maybe see more about the mine that Mr. Senden brought up that allowed the public to pass through between its buildings and kept that right-of-way open. And I feel like we just might not have enough information, at least me personally, coming from my background, to vote on this right now.
Thank you very much. Any other board comments or concerns?
I do concur with that statement. You said it more eloquently than I could have, but I think it was a good summary.
So I would like to take an opportunity, then, if the board has no other questions or concerns, I have a couple that I would like to address as well. And thinking more in terms of the community and economic development. So I also would like more information from the applicant to have a better understanding of maybe what the vision is for the use of that site and the considerations for the quality of life for the surrounding neighbors, whether they be businesses or residents. I'm also a little concerned with the historic look and feel with the spirit of the statutes. And then I also had a question. I read in the agenda that first responders were contacted for comment and didn't have any issue, but a little bit more information about our first responders. And part of the plan, is there some kind of requirement for them to have access to the entirety of the site if this were to go through that would, you know, help prevent fires or any kind of, you know, crisis that may ensue? So I also have other questions before I feel comfortable and...
Okay. I can relate that we're not approving any use on this land. It's just looking at the abandonment only. So even though that might be something that's within your consideration of this, that's not what's before you today, is any kind of use for that. The second thing, as far as the planning department goes, and our thoughts with some of this, was looking at how the applicant is looking at. We look at these as the town as itself, and I understand the historic nature and the historic reasons for this. But also knowing that the circulation patterns that we do have don't follow that 1865, 1885 map that was drawn so nice and neat across all these nice, you know, rectangles of land. Those street patterns don't follow that map. And so when looking at this, there's a lot of streets that come to the edge of a mining tailings and stop, and they're not going to go through because we don't want to remove those mining tailings. There's a lot of different things. So just talking about just keeping it just for the sake of matching the map of what we used to have there, doesn't really, I think you're having to balance that with, do we want a thriving community or not? Or how do we, how do we do that? Whether this does make a thriving community or not, I'm not making any judgment on that. But when we look at these as case by case, I think that's what we're looking at, is does this make sense? Can we see a feasible future for these roads going through? The applicant owns all the land around it, and they have ideas of things that they might want to do in the future. And it's not going to be something that would punch out. They're not going to go through a 50-foot-high earthen wall to get to Mill Street, which is, you know, 40 feet below. That's kind of what we're looking at with, does it even make sense? I can respect what the historic nature of this is. You know, we've talked about, we've had discussions about which ways, you know, buildings should face, you know, east-west, not north-south, or just because of the pattern of that. But then you're also trying to balance it with, we've got a property owner that wants to do something and develop their property, and they have rights to do some of that. They don't necessarily have the right today to do that with those rights-of-way in there. But do we, as a county, want to help them with land that we don't foresee working as any kind of street pattern through there? And historically, the last, not historically as the 1800s, but historically in the last more than 50 years, has been used as an arena and a special event area. We're not approving that today. But, you know, can we see, does it make sense that the county used it for all those years, but now a private person wants to do it? And, you know, that's not good? You know, I don't know. There's balances there.
Yeah, and thank you, Kathy. Alexia, for the record, I guess I should have said that earlier. But I agree in that the economic development sense of things and that a private property owner, to the best of all of our ability, should have a right to access and to use their property in the best way. And I do think that the concerns that we raise here today's board are real and viable concerns. But I think you're right, or not, I don't think you're right, you are right, that we're not addressing those future uses and future plans. Today, we're just addressing abandonment of two easements on property that they own all of the surrounding location to, that would make it easier for them to make plans in the future. So then my next question to you would be, because of the size of the plot, and I know that it's zoned, commercial residential, but as their plans go forward, they would come back for consideration to the planning commission or then again to the county to be considered with some of the concerns that we might have raised. Would that be a possibility?
Potentially.
Okay.
It would depend on what they were proposing. If they're proposing an outdoor, something outdoor, yes, that requires a special use permit. If they're proposing to construct a house or a commercial something for them, that's allowed in the commercial residential zoning district, they not, they wouldn't necessarily come back here.
Okay.
So it just kind of depends. It would go through the historic district if they're constructing anything. An outdoor, like special event thing, wouldn't go through the historic district. But any kind of construction, physical structure of something would.
Okay, so for clarity, if there's a temporary structure for an outdoor event, maybe, you know, a temporary stage and temporary fencing, that doesn't go through the historic district. But then there's also the requirement that that's temporary and is removed. Whereas anything permanent following the county ordinance would then have to go through the correct procedures for permitting and approval?
That's my understanding. I think maybe Kristen might have a little more background in that.
Yeah, this is Kristen. That's, that's correct. Temporary is a little bit fuzzy because some people say they're going to store a shipping container temporarily, but what they mean by that is six months or a year, and then they would need to go to CHDC because it's not really that temporary. But if it was something that was just put up for a weekend, went up on Friday night, came down on Sunday morning or something like that for an event, usually those are fine. I have had people, I've seen people put up a final sign saying, you know, just a temporary sign saying that they're going to advertise for some event or special thing that goes on during an event, and then they don't take it down.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a lot of fine lines about that, but you're right.
Thank you for clarifying. I think just, you know, more than anything for the record, so we can look back, just to have some of these questions answered is really helpful. So any other comments or concerns from the board? No?
Alexia, this is Carlos.
Hi, Carlos, yes.
Hi. So Carlos, getting ready for the record resume. I just had a quick question for you with regards to the diagram on page three. And I'm seeing two low bars in that paragraph. The bottom one is H Street. Correct, H is in Henry.
Yes, H is in Henry. The bottom one, that's your question?
Yeah.
Yes?
Okay, and then when you go to page five, and it shows the view from Mill Street with the southeast of H Street location, I suspect the post will remain. That would be coming out of that H Street, I'm assuming, onto Mill.
Can you repeat that last question, Carlos? I'm sorry.
So on page five, the lower photo?
Yes.
Shows the view from Mill Street, southeast of H Street location. So this could be the continuance of H Street to give a thoroughfare if we did not abandon that. And I guess my question goes back to Kathy. Have we looked at an abandonment of only the one street versus both to begin with, to be able to at least give us some insiders to what they plan on doing, but also maintain that H Street throughway, I guess, if you will, possibility of a throughway of the one that the fire department still, the police department still wants to keep?
Okay, so just to clarify, so if you're looking at the picture on page three, the M where it says Mill Street, if you were standing on that and looking east, that's where that picture is taken, just to give you an idea.
Okay, perfect.
So, and so that, that as a condition, if this is, if this has a recommendation for approval, one of the suggested conditions is to keep this access that's here, either through a public access easement or just not abandoning that little portion. Because what you do is you get onto that street, you come off of Mill Street onto this gravel road, and it immediately jogs to the east and goes down to the I Street. So it kind of goes beyond what's shown on page three. Goes down further, and it connects with the next road that goes through.
This is Kristen. So, yeah, so this is...
Right, down the hill, yeah.
Right. So this is just an access port to I Street, but if you wanted to open up H, the tailing piles is a little bit lower here, right, than it is uphill. In theory, it would be easier to open H than the street above it, correct, or no?
Well, it's less than the street above it, for sure. Whether it's still accessible. Yeah, it feasible, feasible. I think anything's probably possible engineering-wise, but feasible.
I think that's still a pretty, Alexia, for the record, sorry, that's still a pretty steep embankment.
It is.
You know? And for clarity, Alexia, again, the applicant owns property to the west, the center, and to the east of the proposed abandonment. So all, almost all the way down to I Street, and I'm just sort of generalizing here, but, but they own all of that property. So in that sense, they're still not really approaching, at least from the map's perspective.
Right, the next block that goes down past, downhill past H Street, they own also.
Right, okay. And then... Right, okay, and, and then by maintaining that open access from Mill Street, at that, the little H Street spot that just dips down to I Street, doesn't have any real effect on anything that they might do on that property, which you've said Kathy already, and it's written here in the, in the, in the item, that they are fine with whatever the county decides, whether it's an easement, a public easement, or just not abandoning it all, whatever the county decides to do, they're fine with that. So that, okay. So that, that maintains that through access, because that access does go through to, I think, Union Street down on I Street, which also sort of alleviates the issue of first responders' access to the lower parts of that property if necessary. So that answers that question for me. So Carlos, that, did you find some clarity to your question?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. I was just trying to forget it, which made it a new portion to start off with. Because again, I still have a concern with regards to what may happen in the future and what may be posed, you know, down the road, you know, just, I don't know, just whatever.
Okay. Based on the conversation that we've just had with the board, I think the next step is to ask for a motion.
I was just going to, if, if the planning commission still has some questions that they would like answered, because the applicant isn't here, I would suggest maybe ask any of those questions that I can share and then I'll share those with the applicant and maybe we can continue this to the next meeting, if that's, if that's something that you feel appropriate.
I would like to do that and I was going to make that recommendation. But no, I appreciate that, jump in anytime Kathy. Because yeah, I feel like maybe there's some unresolved questions and that we might not be able to make, you know, a really strong choice here today. So does the board feel okay with continuing this? Can we propose the questions to Kathy for answers and then revisit? Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion basically that the board continues this agenda item to the next potential date to be decided in the future after Kathy is able to contact the applicant and get answers to some of the questions we may have.
This is Kristin Brown, I have a procedural question. Do we need to come up with our list of questions here during the public meeting and agree on them? Or is this something that, just from our discussion Kathy's taken notes on, or do we send her our questions, or how does it work?
It's a good question.
Brian?
Sorry?
I was going to maybe have Brian come in.
I was going to suggest if you want to give me the topics of, of kind of your outstanding things and then if you think of something else, feel free to contact me whenever you'd like. But if we want to talk about like the topics that I, if there's things that you would like staff to look into further, I think now would be an appropriate time to, to ask those questions.
Okay. So, let's do that, let's, I'll, I'll take a list of the appropriate, the top, the question topics that we can give to Kathy and again, with the ability to reach out to her if we have more questions. But from the notes that I've taken, there was a consideration for the historic appropriateness of the size of that plot. Taking notes. For plot size and use.
I think, I think it's important to address all the questions from the public comment letter. That any questions that were relevant enough to be able to research and, and answer, you know?
And then the other consideration potentially was the quality of life, which really, I, again, I realize that the point of our discussion today isn't about their future plans, it's about approving the abandonment at those right of ways. But my sense is that in order for us to really make a decision, we would want to have better understanding of what that is in the attempt to help promote economic vitality and development certainly, but that might help.
Okay, I think that would be, I can give that to the applicant to address.
Yeah, this is Kristin, again, I think, I think if they even just had a vague idea or batted around some ideas and said, you know, these are some of the things that we've thought about, when, because this is, would become a very large line, it's not something that we really have here. And so if they, if they say, oh yeah, we're not going to build a huge hotel or we have no desire or budget to do such a thing, we literally just want to be able to have a concert sometimes or to have overflow parking and sell parking spots during big event, you know? They might already have some sort of sense of what they might want to do and they don't have to commit to it, but just to articulate that would help us, I think.
I think so too, I agree. So I have three topics right now, which are, again, sort of the historic appropriateness for the plot size and use. To take into consideration the public comment questions, which really address more than anything the historic nature of the sites, right, and the access to the historic nature of the sites, which, you know, is definitely worth considering. Maybe there's some kind of interpretation that can be done to commemorate that, I don't know. And then the third question is the consideration for the quality of life for the surrounding community in terms of the ideas of the use for the site, with no specificity or guarantee. Do those sort of capture what we've talked about and the concerns that we've had? So with those three topics that I just spoke out loud, I believe that it's okay to ask for a motion and that the motion can be that we continue this agenda item to a future date to provide Kathy an opportunity to find some more information based on the three topics that I just spoke. So I would like to request that motion.
I, Planning Commissioner Sterrett, move that this item be continued to the next meeting so that Kathy, so that Kathy, provides some additional information on the questions that we have brought up in this meeting.
Thank you, Lee, for the motion, may I have a second?
Kristin Brown, second.
Thank you Kristin, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Let me clean up the spot in front of me real quick, everybody. So we are moving on now to agenda item eight. Agenda item eight is for discussion of possible action regarding special use permit two thousand twenty-five dash zero three five. The applicant requests a special use permit to construct two segments of an overall ten-point-four-mile, three-hundred-and-forty-five KV power line outside of the existing Tahoe Reno Industrial Center designated transmission corridor. The special use permit addresses the transmission corridor land use and the additional height located on land-zoned forestry for the two segments located outside of the boundary of the Tahoe Regional Industrial Center. The proposal will include approximately seven poles greater than forty-five feet in height, with the proposed heights ranging from approximately eighty-three feet to one-hundred-and-thirty-nine feet based on the topography of the pole location. The overall power line will connect from the Tracy substation on Waltham Way to the Comstock substation on Battery Boulevard. The proposed transmission line, subject to this special use permit, will be located within a portion of section zero-zero-four and zero-two-seven, township nineteen-north, range twenty-two-east, Story County, Nevada, APNs zero-zero-four dash one-five-four dash two-five and zero-zero-four dash one-five-four dash two-nine. Take it away.
Thank you, well, I think Alexia gave the whole summary of what the project was and the request. So this is a, NV Energy is working on installing a power line between the Tracy substation, which is on Waltham Way, which is kind of by I-80, up to Battery Boulevard, which is that first street when you come from the Highway 50 area, the substation that they have there. When they do these transmission lines and power lines in the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center, they're exempt from having to come through this process because they're in a transmission corridor. And one of the things we did when we did the master plan update was identify the transmission corridor. Because of the topography and how clearances and everything goes, two areas with, for this whole over line, power line, fall out of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center boundary a little bit. I mean, they're right on the border of that. And so this is a special use permit that allows that transmission corridor and the additional height for those, those structures in these two locations. They do have an, an existing easement already from the property owners to, to put these in and staff is recommending approval for this. The applicant's here also. Notices did go out to adjacent property owners and nobody commented on anything.
Thank you Kathy. Okay, so I would like to open it up for comment from the public or the applicant. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please state your name. And if you have a previous presentation, you're not subject to the three-minute rule, I believe.
Hi, good evening.
You only get two minutes.
Well, I'll keep it brief. I'm Matt Chindrich, I'm with NV Energy and I'm joined tonight by Stephen Lanini, the project manager for the project. I want to thank you for hearing the, hearing the rec, request. And additionally, I thank staff for the presentation and putting together the package, it's spot on. I don't think, there's no further need for a presentation, I didn't bring anything, so I thought it was well done. But I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the project.
Thank you so much for joining us today.
Absolutely.
So with that, I'll open it to the board for any questions or concerns that we might have. I don't think so, I thought it was kind of funny to have this in our agenda anyway. I do have one question.
Absolutely.
So I know that there's an airport in Silver Springs and I'm not entirely sure where these, the two taller poles are located. I just wonder if there was any consideration for the flight path for the location of these poles?
There always is consideration for flight paths and in, in this case, we're far enough away from the airport where it doesn't require an FAA permit. If, if any structures are above certain height requirements, though, they, they may need markings and we would certainly follow all those, all those recommendations or rules from the FAA. Yeah, but it's not in the flight path.
Okay, that's the only, and I didn't think, but I thought I'd ask anyway.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments from the public for the applicant before he leaves? Hearing none, okay, thank you.
And just from my past research, just for your own knowledge, I think it's two-hundred feet is the FAA.
I think so, I was just.
Where you have to put a lighter or a ball or something.
Yeah, and I was just thinking, you know, there's hills and, you know, forty-five feet on top of a hundred and, you know, sixty-five-foot hill, whatever.
There, if we exceed that, it would prove the law.
I think, you probably would, you're NV Energy, you know how to do this, right? Yeah. Okay. So no comments from the board, none from the public, so I think this is pretty easy. May I have a motion?
In accordance with the recommendations on the staff, the findings affect under section three A of this report as read into the record by staff and other findings deemed appropriate by the planning commission. And in accordance with the conditions of approval, I, Planning Commissioner Sterrett, recommend approval of special use permit two-oh-two-five dash oh-three-five to construct two segments of an overall ten-point-four-mile, three-forty-five KV power line outside of the existing Tahoe Reno Industrial Center designated transmission corridor. The special use permit addresses the transition corridor land use and the additional height located on land-zoned forestry for the two segments located outside of the boundary of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. The proposal will include approximately seven poles greater than forty-five feet in height, with the proposed heights ranging from approximately eighty-three feet to one-hundred-and-thirty-nine feet based on the topography of the pole location. The overall power line will connect from the Tracy substation on Waltham Way to the Comstock substation on Battery Boulevard. The proposed transmission line, subject to this special use permit, will be located within a portion of sections zero-zero-four and zero-two-seven, T nineteen-north, R twenty-two-east, Story County, Nevada, APNs zero-zero-four dash one-five-four dash two-five and zero-zero-four one-five-four dash two-nine.
Thank you, Lee, Kathy, would you like to prefind?
Sure, the findings affect for a motion of approval. This approval is for special use permit two thousand twenty-five dash zero-three-five to construct two segments of an overall ten-point-four-mile, three-hundred-and-forty-five KV power line outside of the existing Tahoe Reno Industrial Center designated transmission corridor. Special use permit addresses the transmission corridor land use and the additional height located on land-zoned forestry for the two segments located outside of the boundary of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. The proposal will include approximately seven poles greater than forty-five feet in height, with the proposed heights ranging from approximately eighty-three feet to one-hundred-and-thirty-nine feet based on the topography of the pole location. The overall power line will connect from the Tracy substation on Waltham Way to the Comstock substation on Battery Boulevard. The proposed transmission line, subject to the special use permit, will be located within a portion of section zero-zero-four and zero-two-seven, T nineteen-N, R twenty-two-E, Story County, Nevada, APNs zero-zero-four dash one-five-four dash two-five and zero-zero-four dash one-five-four two-nine. Special use permit conforms to the two thousand twenty-four Story County Master Plan for the industrial and transition from resources to industrial designated area in which, excuse me, the subject property is located. A discussion supporting this finding for the special use permit is provided in section two-point-D of the staff report and the contents thereof are cited in an approval of the special use permit. Special use permit complies with the general purpose, goals, objectives, standards of the county master plan, story, the zoning ordinance and any other plan, program, map or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to the official notice by the county. The proposal, location, size, height, operations and other significant features will be compatible with and will not cause substantial negative impact on adjacent land uses or will perform a function or provide a service that is essential to the surrounding land uses, community and neighborhood. Special use permit will result in no substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent property, character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, parking, public improvements, public sites or right-of-way or other matters affecting the public health, safety and general welfare either as they now exist or as they may in the future be developed as a result of the implementation of the provisions and policies of the county master plan, this title and any other plans, program, map or ordinance adopted or under consideration pursuant to an official notice by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction to guide growth and development. The proposed use in the proposed area will be adequately served by and will impose no undue burden on any of the improvements, facilities, utilities or services provided by the county or other governmental agency having jurisdiction in the county. Special use permit with the recommended conditions of approval complies with the requirements of chapter seventeen-point-zero-three-point-one-five-zero special use permit, chapter seventeen-point-three-two F forestry and chapter seventeen-point-twelve general provisions of the Story County Code. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. All right, I have a motion from Lee for approval. Kathy's read the findings, may I have a second?
Jim, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you Carlos, all opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Great, moving on to agenda item nine, discussion of possible action, determination of the next planning commission meeting. next planning commission meeting. We have a proposed date for the next meeting?
Yes, staff is recommending June 5th as the next meeting. It would be here in the courtroom at 6 o'clock.
In person, okay. Does anybody have a conflict with the date?
No.
No? All right, may I have a motion to approve, uh, June 5th, 2025, 6:00 PM, here in person for our next meeting?
Mrs. Jen, I will move that we have the next meeting at June 5th here in the courtroom at 6 o'clock.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I will second, Lee Sterrett.
Thank you, Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. All right, item 10, correspondence.
Just the topic on the abandonment that you received earlier.
Okay, thanks, Kathy. Item 11, public comments on non-agenda items. Probably not, Marshall, did you have something to say? You're the only public today. Okay. Item 12, staff?
Um, I was gonna just let everybody know, Tuesday, May 13th, there's a public meeting at 5:30, excuse me, regarding the Gold Hill and Divide and Silver City master drainage plan that we're working with Carson Water Sub Conservancy. The meeting, I believe, starts, it does start at 5:30. It'll be at the Silver City little community center, schoolhouse area there, and it'll be a short presentation and then just kinda, they're, they're wanting to, similar how we did the Virginia City Plan and the Mark Twain Plan, just having community input and maps and commenting about where problem areas are. They're at the very beginning of their process, and so they're wanting to hear from people to make sure, like, they can see where they think certain problems are, but they wanna hear from the public if there's something that they're not aware of, or it's on private property and maybe they can't see it, or, or whatever. So hopefully, everybody that's interested with that will be able to attend. Notices were sent out, or mailed out to all the property owners in that general vicinity, so, and we'll have it on our social media also, sharing that meeting. The other thing that we recently received notice of, and it's, it's early still, but I'll be thinking about it, the Nevada Association, Nevada APA, what is it, American Planning Association, is having their meeting in Douglas County this year at the end of October. So if planning commissioners are interested in going, can talk to Lanini and I, and we can send out more information when I get a little bit more, but just have that on your radar if, if that's something you think you might be interested in attending.
I am, right off the bat, just put me on that.
I'm not sure what they're, they usually have like an overreaching topic that they try to address, I don't know, I don't even know if they've announced that part yet, so.
I'd like to go as well, I've been working, talking to Eric Kasey about it, and it's gonna be, it will be at the Carson Valley Inn down in Minden.
I would like to go as well.
Yeah, we'll have more information for you, but, you know, just on your radar that it's out there.
It's October-
I don't-
I think it's like the 23rd, 24th. Yeah, somewhere on the 20th or so, somewhere around there.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Jim.
I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, I should just mention too, we're working on, we've, I think I mentioned this last time, but the parking and circulation study for the county. We're working on the scope of work right now, we've met with a selected contractor, they're working on their scope of work, staff is reviewing, different staff are reviewing it right now. So that should be something that's coming up to our board. Hopefully, the, the second meeting in May that they have, if not, it'll be the first of June, so, that's moving forward. Some of these questions that we're bringing up today will probably be topics of that document also.
That's really exciting, thank you for that. Okay, item 13, board comments.
Nothing today?
Nothing? Nobody's birthday? Okay. All right. Item 14, adjournment. It is 6:54, and this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too, Carlos, thank you.